Hi folks, today we're gonna take a look at Liberty Troll. Where Zacky Boy goes to another school board to F around and find out. But before we get into today's video, as always, a big thank you to all of my current and new channel members and subscribers. Without your guys' continuous, ongoing support, I couldn't keep this channel going. So I want to thank you all personally from the bottom of my heart. If you guys are new to the channel, please subscribe to the page, leave a like and a comment because it really helps me with the algorithm. And if you can, please consider becoming a member. With all that being said, let's enjoy today's video.
Public enter here. This is the visitor lobby. Uh, I don't think so, not yet. Patricia, right? I'll let you know when I do. Thank you. Government watching us as usual?
Oh, blow it out your ass.
There's a, looks like another lobby over there. Looks like fingerprints down under here. That's another lobby. Hey, how's it going? Um, that's a lobby over there. How do I get through over there?
Just to that lobby area?
Yeah. Thank you.
Are you sure there's nobody I can call to you or?
Oh, no, I'll let you know if I think, eventually I'm gonna get a public records request. So I'll, I'll let you know when I'm ready for that. Alright, thank you, Pat.
Did you, you need the form or are you here to pick up?
Uh, no, I'm gonna just give it verbally once I, um, to whoever your designee is or equivalent to a PIO. Who's your PIO here?
You know, little Zacky Boy here is starting to make me wonder something. Why is it that he's always asking for someone to take his public records request verbally? Now, I could understand if his hands were immobilized, you know, maybe he had a broken hand or, you know, maybe it was cast or something like that. But yet, he's fully functioning. He has capable hands. Isn't the fact that he maybe can't read or write? But then again, he is a fraudator, so.
I'll, I'll let you know. I, I got a little bit of work to do, but I'll, I'll let you know. Thank you. It's the boardroom. Just can't go out this way. Oh, maybe? Uh, yeah, did, um, how do I, so this way is where the PIO office is, right?
Well, everything is locked down here. You have to sign in and somebody has to come and get you. So, um, I did tell our PIO officer that there was somebody in the lobby might want them. I was just making sure they were there.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and say we're a total lockdown facility. Um, I'll go, yeah, I'll go ahead and see them now, whoever that is. Who, who's your PIO?
Caitlin Butler. Janet Murnahan is our director. She is at a conference today. Caitlin will be the next person.
Perfect, that's fine. That's fine.
Public records are in writing, so I do have a form if you need that.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, give it to him verbally. They write it down. I get a stamped copy and then that's pretty much it.
Now, there are two working theories with Zacky Boy here. Theory one, he can't properly read or write to fill out those forms to get the public records that he's trying to request. Or theory two, he's doing this intentionally to waste people's time, to waste tax resources on frivolous public records requests because he knows that's his little backdoor way to get in for quote unquote legitimate business.
Let me get you the form so you have it.
Okay, yeah, I'll take, I'll look at it.
Just have a seat there by that.
Wonderful, thank you.
Caitlin's on her way.
Alrighty, thank you.
But like I said, if you'd like to sign in, we'd be one happy to give that to get you.
Yeah, that's fine. Where do I sign it? Over here?
Come back over here.
Okay. No, I don't drive. I don't drive.
Alright, well then can't make you back. Let me get Caitlin, Caitlin, we're gonna come out that way.
Okay.
Now, for the sake of timing and pacing, we're gonna be jumping ahead to some key points in the video. So we're gonna actually jump ahead to the public information officer talking to him about his public records and him getting a badge and him, well, being.
This is the public records request form.
Okay, I was gonna give it to you, uh, it's Caitlin, right?
Yes.
Catherine, Caitlin. Caitlin, nice to meet you, I'm Zack. Um, so I usually just give it to him verbally and then you guys just write it down. I get a stamped copy. So that's kinda like my receipt until I get the email confirmation. I'll give my email though, so you have that to send it to.
Oh, oh, what, what are you wanting?
Um, if you don't mind, if you could just write down the items here. It's about three or four items I wanna give you. It's gonna be first, last names, titles, salaries of all, uh, public employees in this, uh, facility, uh, for fiscal year 2024.
Okay, and the public records request is pertaining to these individuals?
It's just their public information, like the first, last names, titles, like job titles, and salaries.
Okay.
Zack is clearly one of the laziest fraudsters we've ever seen. I mean, look at fraudsters like Audit Them. He clearly goes in with a mission to fill out his frivolous floor requests, but he writes them out. LIA writes out his. Hell, JC, uh, uh, News writes out his. But Zack is just too lazy or too dumb to actually do the work.
For 2024.
Okay. So which individuals do you want?
What was that?
Which, I'm trying to clarify what the actual request is.
Those are the, that is the request.
The name of the people that work in public information?
Any public employee, yeah, any, uh.
Any public employee?
Who works in this facility, correct.
All employees in this facility?
Correct.
I don't, I'm gonna have to double check.
It's, yeah, it's, I do it all, all over. It's, it's public information. Cause you guys are public employees. You work for the state or county.
Are you looking for specific employees or everybody as a whole?
I'm being generally specific, yeah. So first, last names, titles, job titles, salaries, everyone who works in this building, that's correct.
Only here at the school?
Only here at the school board.
Okay, so that's, and you, you verbally done the public records request?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, uh, the chapter one ti- chapter 119 of the Florida statute, you can give it verbally. And then you guys just write it down and, and submit it to whoever goes and treats those.
Write it down and give it to our public request, um.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Request specialist and then she can go ahead and get that to you if anything else is needed.
Do you work in the same department as Caitlin? Okay, and who are you?
Yvette Cruz.
Hey, nice to meet you. I'm Zack. So I wanted to also get pictures and video inside of the public offices in this, on this facility. And also look at, see what our tax dollars are getting, uh, put into, like pictures and also wanna see if you guys are ADA compliant and uh, look at some other compliance related, uh, tasks that I can observe from public, basically.
Right.
Okay, so, so are you wanting to go into the facility?
Yes, anywhere that's publicly accessible, whether or not you have an appointment, anyone that would go in there for services per se. Obviously, I'm not there for those services, but I would wanna be, I wanna have the same access so I can observe and see, you know, those.
So anything public facing would be this. Anything behind that door is employees.
So that woman sitting at the desk in there is an employee? I was just, I was just, I was just, yeah, so if you have an appointment, members of the public can go beyond that point, yeah, so.
Without an appointment, we can't just let you free rein within the district?
I'll take an escort.
That's not how it works. That's not how any of this worked.
Have an ID, cause in order to make you a badge, we can't, you have to have an ID.
Well, I don't have a, I don't drive, so.
Government, um, identification card? Anybody that goes back there even for an appointment, we have to print out a visitor badge based off your ID.
What about a homeless person? How do they get in? They?
Okay, we're gonna have to circle back on that.
Okay, so I'm not homeless, but I don't have an ID of any kind, so I don't drive. So how do I gain access into the rest of the taxpayer funded building?
We'd have to find out for you. If you, I mean, we can, if you leave your number, we can definitely circle back.
Well, I gotta catch a flight later on. That's why this process isn't really convenient for the public.
Shenanigans. Na 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 na. Shenanigans. Na 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 na. And we're calling shenanigans, folks. Because of the truth of the matter is, he would need an ID to board a plane. All airlines now have policies in place stating that you must have a photo ID to verify that it's you who is on the ticket. If you do not provide them with a photo ID verifying that it is your identity and it is your ticket, you do not get to board the plane. So Zack here could either face up and give up his ID to get a pass to do his quote unquote journalism, or he could continue to lie and be a typical frauder.
Um, is there somebody, I don't care if you, if you get a janitor to walk me around, um, but I have legitimate business, First Amendment protected business.
You're lying!
Sure, let me, let me make a quick phone call and then if you wanna grab his request and then I'll come.
I'll wait, I'll wait, I'll wait in here, it's fine. Yeah, it's gonna be three items, pretty easy.
Three items?
Yeah, it's gonna be first, last names.
Okay.
Titles, job titles, that is, and salaries. And I'll actually add a fourth item, now that I think about it. Um, this process that, uh, Ms. Cruz just described, is that a policy or is that just a practice?
Which process for the IDs?
The IDs.
Um, I think she's grabbing someone to better explain that.
Okay, if you could just add that as a fourth item on there, just add a copy of whatever that policy is that covers the process of a member of the public gaining access into the building.
Okay, I, I.
Appreciate it.
Just to clarify, you want the first and last names of all employees here at this building?
Correct.
Their job title and their salary?
Yep, and then a copy of the policy for gaining access into the other parts of the building you would need apparently an appointment for.
Okay, and then your name?
My name is Zack.
Last name?
I'm gonna leave that private. I'll give my email though. It's, uh, liberty troll, L I B E R T Y. Troll is T R O L L dot LLC at gmail. Hi, how you doing?
Um, Zack here had, wanted clarification on the process for visitors entering the building with how you have to have an ID to get them a visitor badge and you wanted clarification on it.
Yeah, if you don't have an ID, how do you, how does one get into the building?
Oh, well, it's quite simple. It's so simple, even a child could understand it. You don't.
Wouldn't that be a Fourth Amendment violation? If somebody wants to keep their Fourth Amendment protected? Is it government property? So it's taxpayer funded?
But this is a secure building, it's a secure facility. You have to ID yourself just like you would when you go to the school. We have to run your name and make sure you're allowed to be around juveniles, kids in these types of facilities.
Do you guys run a background check? So how do you know?
We make sure you're not a sex offender or a wanted criminal.
So you do a background check? Alright. Well, I, I value my Fourth Amendment respectfully. I don't wanna give up my personal identified information. I. So what I'm here to do is I'm, I'm an independent journalist and gathering content for a story. Doing investigative journalism piece on the, uh, school district here in Brevard County. Um, so basically what Bransburg v., uh, Bransburg v., uh, Hayes says, it's case law, it's already been decided upon, that wherever the public has access, the press also has equal access. I'm sorry? If they have an appointment, they, they can. Yeah, but that, that, that's a violation. Is that a, yeah, I understand. Is that a policy or, or is it just, just a practice? That's the law? What law is that that you have to get, to be IDed in order to enter into a, the people's building? It's taxpayer funded? I understand, I understand that. I understand that, but. So. So all knowledge, like what you're trying to say is like there's certain areas are designated by government officials, public servants as authorized personnel only. But there's also areas that are open, they have services that we pay for that are given back to the public. I'll explain why this is a violation, um, of the Fourth Amendment and also our First Amendment. So you have freedom of press. And under the First Amendment, right? So with freedom of press, that gives us the right to observe our government in the course of their official duties, but what's going on here with this process, which I'm still trying to determine if it's a policy or just a process you guys are just used to doing? I, I understand that, but has, in order for it to be enforceable, you have to have some kinda like, you know, do you guys have a policy in place for that? Okay, so I already, before you requested that, so I should be getting that if that's, if that exists. But basically, wherever the people can. I'm sorry, yeah, she's, yeah, she has it. So basically wherever the people can go in a building, um, regardless of an appointment, the press can also go in those same areas. Cause you know, wouldn't it make sense, the logic behind that is, wouldn't it make sense for an average Joe to walk into an office for services regardless of an appointment and the press can't get in there? Um, but if they need me to be escorted, like if you wanna escort me, I'm totally cool with that.
Now, what Zack and J-Town and all the other frauders seem to misunderstand with the Brantworth v. Hayes case is simply, they are not press. And it's not that the press can't go there. The press can go there just like the public can, and the public has the same access to the areas that the press does. It's just they all need to follow the same criteria. They need to provide ID to get a visitor's badge to go there. Now, something else is that this is a limited public forum, not a traditional public forum. As the officer said, Zack has full permission to film in this lobby and outside to his heart's desires. But if he wishes to go any further, he needs to provide ID. And it is not a violation of his Fourth Amendment because it's not an unreasonable search or seizure of his papers. So, all of this is just him trying to spit out some hogwoss or verbal shenanigans to get his way.
I, yeah, I understand the reasoning behind that, but again, that's, we live in the United States and that's an infringement of our Fourth Amendment right, you know? Freedom, freedom's not safe. But listen, um, if this were like a private business or something, then that would be the end of discussion, right? But this, as it is, this is a public building. It is funded by the, on the taxpayer dime. Yeah, and it's. It's the same thing as like a city hall or a DMV or whatever. It's no more. In the public areas you can, yeah. All I'm saying is that you guys have public offices back here and I understand you guys have like a process you're trying to implement where you need to ID somebody, make you feel better, more comfortable bringing somebody, a member of the public back in there, but again, those are still public areas because they're accessible to the public, they're open to the public. Those are, those offices. Yeah, this is one, yeah. That's one of them, but. And they're not ID'd, are they? So it's, it just, coincidentally, it's safer during a public meeting, nobody's ID'd during that time. You see, you see, what I mean, it's kinda, doesn't make sense. Where's the boardroom? Can I go in the boardroom? I mean, I just wanna take a look at the boardroom, like to get some pictures and video. Okay, well, I, we're, we're not gonna agree there. It's, it's, it is technically a Fourth Amendment violation. Um, keeping your private information private. I don't know if you guys have encountered this before or not, but I wanted to make that, make that clear. I've gone to plenty of, uh, uh, school districts or school boards that basically you can go into any areas that have a public office, like a PIO, like her office basically. Like your office has like, I assume, a desk where people can walk up to the desk. You got the glass there. You guys don't have that set up? So it's all, so what you're saying is all private offices? So when visitors come here, what, for, for an appointment, what are some of those appointments for then? Like if you have somebody makes an appointment, like what kind of appointment would that be to be able to go back there and be escorted? If it's all private offices, where are they looking at?
It depends. It varies on what appointment they may have. So it's not, I mean.
Can you give me one example of an appointment, so I can make an appointment for that? Um, same reason, to, to get past the security measures. I, I understand that. I'm just gonna pretend for a moment that's not, that's not part of.
So you want them to help you with your frauditing. You want them to tell you how to set up an appointment so you can go under the guise of that to gather content for a fictitious story? Hmm. You know, either you're just really dumb or just really lazy. And I have to call a little bit of shenanigans here because, yeah, you've been to several school districts before and have it shown ID and have it signed in, and you've been trespass from a lot of them.
The process, but, um, what, what, what appointment would one need to make, assuming they had ID to be able to get into the, uh, other areas? Like what appointment would that be? What's one example? What's one, what's one example of apartment, department here that somebody would make an appointment for to be escorted to for services?
If you wanted to make an appointment to bring your camera and stuff in, you could do that with us, but you would have to ID yourself. We would need an ID or something so that we could ID you.
Yeah, I don't mind making an appointment, but like I said, you know, we have a Fourth Amendment in the United States and I take that very seriously, you know? I value my, my private information, you know? If I go into a doctor's office or something, I'll give it, cause it's private, I have to, but, um, public, you don't have to do that.
Right, then like, um, Lieutenant Smith was explaining, this isn't your traditional public government building because it's a school facility?
No, it is. It, it falls into the category of a limited public forum. So you got time, place, manner restrictions. And one of those, so time basically is hours of operation, place, it's a public building, it's funded by our tax dollars. And then three, manner, you know, that would be like peacefully recording for my, my, for my, uh, to, to make myself an example, but, um. You know, uh, it, this sounds like this is your first time probably coming across this. You've never had anybody come in here not who values their information, wants to tour the building for any reason? Am I the first one?
People, if people come in and provide proof of identification, we work with them.
Yeah, I, you said that. I just, um, so this is your first time coming across this then, right?
Like I said, if people provide identification, we work with them.
Okay. Yeah, so back to my question. Yeah, yeah, so, so assume I had an ID and, and I said, okay, I'll make, I'll show my ID, but now I need to make an appointment for, uh, a service to go back in here into the other offices and things that people come here for with an appointment. What, what's, what are some examples of such appointments?
Go on our website and see all of the different departments that we have and kinda come up with your own judgment on that, but.
You don't, you don't have an, okay, you don't have an, you don't have an example? I have, I have to go look it up.
No, num nuts, they're not going to give you an example so you could try to talk to them in circles even more. So let's jump ahead to where Zack claims to have a violent encounter with an individual attacking him.
You're in public. You're in public. I'm not recording you. Hey, don't touch me. Don't touch me. Don't touch me. I'll forever change the way you brush your teeth if you touch me again. Don't touch me or my property. Get away. Step back. Get back. Get back. That's right, you're in public. Learn the law.
Okay, um, here's your copy. There's no need for us to sign it, cause I'm gonna go and drop it off and I can give you a number for the records person if you have any questions, like if she received the records request or anything like that.
Okay, so the superintendent, uh, he's in a meeting right now?
Yes, yeah, he's not available right now, so we're not gonna.
When is your next council meeting?
Our next school board meeting?
School board meeting, excuse me. Okay, cool. I think that's all you guys can do for me. I appreciate you, you know, taking the time to help me. It's just unfortunate the way things. Some, some public buildings have the same exact sort of policies or practices and it's unfortunate. It, it shows a real disdain for the public and I know that's probably not where you stand, but you know, that's just the way it looks. It's a bad look for the, for the city or county. But yeah, thank you for your help. Appreciate you. Ma'am, gotta talk to you? Yeah. No, not you, sorry. You guys are good. You guys are good. Yeah. So that, that gentleman, could you, could you, could you detain him for me before he gets away for assaulting me? He just grabbed my camera and I got it on film. So I want you to detain him, please. Don't, don't let him get away. Oh, he's right there. I'm gonna keep my, uh, stay out of the personal space.
Now, it just seems like he's trying to escalate the situation even further. The gentleman told him he didn't wanna be filmed and I'll play the devil's advocate saying that yes, he does have the right to film him in public. There's no expectation of privacy in public. However, seeing that the man didn't wanna be filmed and moved his camera out of the way, Zack is now trying to furthermore get this to turn into a even more volatile situation than it needs to be. I mean, it, it's just more of him trying to justify and play the victim more so he can get those sweet clicks and views that he so desperately wants.
Oh, you grabbed my property. He's not leaving my sight. He's not leaving my sight. I'm, I'm not in his personal space.
Now, for timing and pacing, we're gonna jump ahead to when the sheriff's department shows up to deal with Zack's claims of an assault. And for the sake of transparency, I will cover what happens in this section that I'm taking out. It's more of him just standing there quietly and being asked to step back by the lieutenant while he tries to detain the individual there.
Here today. Hey, how's it going?
Good, how are you?
Good. You're here to see me, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I was the one that was assaulted, so.
Okay, can we go outside and talk?
Uh, right here's fine. Right over here's fine.
Okay.
So I was standing right here where we're going, um, just minding my own business. I was actually waiting on the, uh, the PIO to come out to give me the stamped copy of the public records request that I came here to get, which was accomplished. So I was waiting here for her and then there was a gentleman standing over there. He's still here. They took him back into a restricted area.
Okay.
I don't know his name or anything, but, um, never met him before. He started yelling at me from across the lobby area, saying not to record me, which I wasn't. I mean, I couldn't even see him from where I was, cause there's a person standing in front of me. He just wanted to be a star, I guess, but he came at me. I mean, I couldn't even see him from where I was, cause there's a person standing in front of him. He just wanted to be a star, I guess, but he came at me. Um, and I told him, you know, you're in public, there's no expectation of privacy in public. I'm not, I told him, I'm not even gonna record you before he even got up to me. So when he got up to me, he, uh, he swatted at me like, you know, and hit my camera and stuff like that. I showed the officers or deputies, um, what happened.
Did you get it on camera?
I did, you wanna see it?
Yeah.
Okay, so you saw the video, correct?
Yes, do you have your driver's license on you?
No, I don't. Why would you need that?
I need your ID. If you wanna make a report, I have to have, I have to know who you are.
Um, I can give you my, my first name, last name, birthdate. You can find everything that way.
Do you have your driver's license on you? Did you drive here?
I'm not gonna, it's, it's irrelevant. I can give you all the information you need. I don't have my ID on me.
Well, I gotta be able to identify you.
Okay.
Anybody can give anybody's name.
Well, are you going to?
I'm gonna do a report.
Well, I need to know first, are you going, that's an arrestable offense. Are you guys going to arrest him? Is he detained right now?
Listen here, fraudy, uh, you don't get to determine who gets arrested and who doesn't. They have to do an investigation. And if you want them to do a report on this, they need your name. You could provide them with your, with your ID or a driver's license and you could have this go about a hell of a lot faster. Instead, you wanna play these little games. I mean, it's like you're trying to hide something. Do you have active warrants or something? Are, are you being looked at for something? Are you not supposed to be around these schools? It makes people wanna question things.
Sir.
Hey, how you doing? Okay, can I show you the video first and I'm gonna get your, your tape on it? Well, it doesn't matter, I was assaulted.
It does matter, you wanna make a report.
If you guys witnessed an assault, you would arrest that person, correct?
Possibly, assault.
Okay, I'll show you, I'll show you the video and then if it's an assault, I wanna see you guys, I wanna see what you're gonna do. I don't want you guys to get my ID and stuff and to be like, okay, sorry, we won't see that as assault, but thanks for the ID. We now know who you are. I wanna, I wanna keep my Fourth Amendment protected unless I know you guys are gonna arrest him. Fourth Amendment? Yeah. Yeah, I don't wanna give him my identification. I, I value my private information. That's under the Fourth, Fourth Amendment.
Make the report, I need your identification. I need to know who you are.
Well, I need to know, can you, I'll show you the video? Who, who's, who outranks you? Are you the, so you're the corporal, right?
She has more rank over me, sure.
Okay, cool. So what, what's, what did you just watch?
Name and date of birth. I need your ID.
Uh, we'll get to that.
You're gonna make a report. I need to know who you are.
Ma'am, I'll get to that, but what you just witnessed, is that assault? Yes or no?
I didn't see him make contact with your camera. He came towards you and then I saw you put your hand out and tell him to get away.
Okay.
I did not see him.
You didn't see him, you didn't see him hit the camera?
I did not see him hit the camera.
So you saw how he hit this and this went like this? You saw that, right?
I saw him coming towards you. I did not see him hit the camera.
Okay, so why would I give you my identification if you don't even see it as assault?
Report, I'm gonna do a report.
It's not an assault because he didn't touch you. It's not battery because he didn't hurt you. This is clearly just you wasting people's time. Just give them your ID if you want them to file the report. If not, just let it the hell go. Seriously, this isn't Hungry Jack or Burger King. You don't get it your way here. You want them to file the report, you want them to arrest him, they, you want them to file charges with the DA? You cooperate. If not, grow the hell up and go about your business.
Okay, well, I'll just do.
Call this out here, someone do a report. So I need to know who you are, so I can do a report.
Just put John Doe on it, I guess. I can, I can choose to prosecute later if I wanna give the rest of my information. All you, all you need is John Doe, go ahead, sorry. Yeah, you can put John Doe for all I care. Uh, it's not my name, but you can put John Doe and later if I wanna prosecute, I'll, I'll have to.
Report of this or not?
To make a report, you don't need all my information.
Yes, I do.
To prosecute, yes.
No, to make a report, I need your name.
My name's Zack. Did you get, did you get his information? Okay, I tell you what, you guys get his information first.
I got his information.
Oh, you got it, okay. What's his, what's his name?
You wanna be, you wanna, you are the victim. I need to know who you are.
Okay, well, who's he? Who is he?
They're not gonna give you his name. They're not gonna give you his information. Because it would put him and his family in jeopardy if you or one of your followers decided to retaliate against him. And if they did do that and somebody did retaliate against him because of what he did to you, they're held liable. So to protect them and him from your idiot followers, they're not gonna give you his name.
What's his name?
I don't need to say that it's a mention.
Is it the employee? Is he employed here? But I don't know what he's gonna do. I don't know this guy. You saw how aggressive he was? He approached me aggressively with the intent to do harm, right? So, so he, he had the intention to do me harm as far as I was concerned, right? But it was obvious, the guy came at me aggressively, correct? Right? And he put his hands out. And if I wouldn't have done this, he probably would have gone full blown hands on. That's probably because I.
Can't arrest people for what they might have done.
But he did, he did try to intimidate me. Intimidation, approaching somebody aggressively with the intent to do harm? I think in the court of law, if somebody were to watch that video, they'd be like, yeah, he, it was pretty clear.
Feel free to show that video. I'm, I've been doing this twenty years. Tell you, that doesn't meet either statutory requirement. I can bring up the statute, we can read them together. I'm not trying to blow you off. I'm telling you, it does not meet battery, he didn't make contact with you. It does not meet assault. Yeah, cause it has to be a well-founded fear in the individual. He has had the ability and opportunity to posit, and he has to show that one, want to cause some type of harm. There's none of that there. He's obviously trying to make you stop filming him. So it's not gonna meet battery or assault. Could be grounds for an injunction if you want to apply for an injunction. I don't know if the judge would grant it.
There was a case.
And we're gonna end it here, folks. Zack tries to make an argument about another case that has nothing to do with him or any of the situations that he's in, except for he was filming at a private establishment and filming somebody who is a public figure. Zack is told by the sheriff's deputies that it does not meet the criterias for anything and they will talk to the guy and if he's a school board employee, that they will talk to the school board and let them discipline him. He refuses to give up any of his personal information to file a report and continues to go outside to say that the police were letdowns and it was a fail for the audit. So if you guys like this video, please like, share and subscribe. Leave a thumbs up and a comment because it helps me with the algorithm. And if you can, please consider becoming a member. With all that being said, be well, be safe. Special thanks to all members of the news team. Without your guys' continuous, ongoing support, I couldn't keep the channel going. So I wanna thank all of you personally from the bottom of my heart.